Member Guian?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Tom Hanson.
Second.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any public comments, Mr. Moreno?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one from Andrea Crowe, who would like to address the council about some Paramount Library events. Andrea?
Mayor Martinez, council members in the city of Paramount. Paramount Library is hosting some very exciting events this week. On Thursday, July 19th, at 4:00 p.m., Make Mo is coming. Make Mo is LA County Library's Maker Mobile. They'll be onsite, offering children ages 5 to 18 a hands-on STEAM experience. On Friday, July 20th, at 3:00 p.m., we're inviting adults to create their very own picture frames. And on Saturday, July 21st, at 2:00 p.m., we have our family event. We're hosting "The Last Days of Dinosaurs" with scientist Richard Wade. So come on into the library, we have something for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
We do have one more, Madam Mayor, and that's from Ms. Lisa Bravo, and she'd like to talk about apraxia. Ms. Bravo?
Good evening, Diane Martinez and council members. My name is Lisa Bravo, and I'm here today to thank you for supporting Paramount Unified School District with all the services they provide for their students. See, I have a student in special education who receives outstanding services here at Paramount Unified through your continued support. My daughter, Ashley, is nine years old, who has apraxia. Apraxia is neurological speech disorder, which affects her ability to clearly and correctly produce syllables and words. The most obvious things that others notice about her is her limited or unclear speech. When Ashley was first diagnosed having severe motor apraxia, my husband and I were told by a couple neurologists and speech pathologists that Ashley would never speak. So she was taught to express herself through sign language, which she learned from a speech therapist at Cornerstone Speech Center, and gestures to communicate to her family. Ashley began speech therapy with Ashley Boyer, speech pathologist at Lincoln School, when she was three years old. Currently, she's in a regular, she's going into a 4th grade classroom at Lincoln School, and is excelling in all academic areas. In the past six years, she has made a lot of progress. During the first two IPs, I was in tears because I didn't know what my daughter's future holds. But by the grace of God, and God sending labors to Ashley, she is making leaps and bounds in regards to improvement. Ashley Boyer, the speech pathologist at Lincoln, is amazing. When she first started speech therapy at Lincoln School, she could not say her sister's name, Melissa. She would call her A, and then she learned how to say Ally. At the beginning of 1st grade, she surprised me by calling Alyssa by her first name at the dinner table one evening. Ashley used a Novashat, which is a device that spoke for her, but she no longer is in need of it. Just last week, she participated in choir camp at Emmanuel Church. The first song they sang was "God is So Good." I was in tears when I heard this and saw Ashley singing with choir. God has been so good to her. Once again, I would like to thank you for supporting that, all you give to Paramount Unified. When Ashley was first diagnosed, I wrote a poem about Ashley, and I'd like to share it with you now. I titled it "Ashley." I open my mouth, I try my best. But what are words to me is babble to the rest. They turn their heads and they look away, but they just know what to say. I'm that special kid that's different from the rest, but what they don't know is that I'm trying my best. I've tried and tried to be so clear. I've tried to whisper in their ears. I've shouted and I've cried each time my words have been denied. I promise I'm trying, I try each and every day. Please don't avoid me because I'm special in that way. Someday, I will have something to say. Someday, I will say your name. And if I keep trying each and every day, someday I will tell you that I love you each and every way. Please do not turn your head, please don't walk away. Please try to understand what I'm saying. I know it's not easy, I know it's hard. I know people stare. Show them that you don't care. Show them you love me, special and all. I open my mouth, I try my best. But I think our words are just babble to the rest. But I have you with me each and every day. And although I can't say it, you know that Jesus and I love you in each way. But she can say that now. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Lisa, for coming before the council. That's a beautiful, successful story. And yes, the city council governs the city, but all the children in this community is under our jurisdiction, and we love them. And so, thank you for coming and sharing that beautiful story with us. God bless you. Any other public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Item 1, Urgency Ordinance Number 1105.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. In June, the council heard about our current approval process for resident permit parking, and how that has been impacting our neighborhoods. And as a result, the council approved an urgency ordinance that would allow us to press the pause button, in a sense, on approving any more applications for resident permit parking. The council then directed us to develop policies and procedures for the resident permit parking, which we're currently in the process of doing. So the item before you tonight will allow the moratorium that you approved to continue, so that we can continue with our research. And with a little more detail on this, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, who will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, this item has become, has come before you several times. I'm sorry, I'm having problems with the clicker here. Okay, here we go. Okay, so this is, I'm going to outline the timeline that we've actually had spent with this item here. As you could tell, in May of 2018, this item went before council, or commission, our Public Safety Commission. And at that time, the commission directed staff to establish a formal criteria for resident permit parking. As John mentioned, on June 5th, 2018, the city council heard this item and directed the city attorney to prepare an interim urgency ordinance. And the item came before you again on June 19th, 2018, 19th, 2018. And the city council adopted interim urgency ordinance 1103. Tonight, we're presenting an urgency ordinance number 1105, and that is to request an extension for six months. And that would be good through January of 2019. This would allow us to conduct a survey of the cities, surrounding cities, that already have an established resident permit criteria and already have established resident permit neighborhoods. Our plan is to work through all the details through public safety, the Public Safety Commission, and create a formal criteria. After that, we will present the criteria for city council approval. So that was a summary, and it is recommended that the city council read by title only, wait for the reading, and adopt urgency ordinance number 1105. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Adriana?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 2, Approval of Plan to Prevent/Combat Homelessness for the cities of Paramount and Balfour. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may, Madam Mayor and council. At the last meeting, you also heard a presentation from PATH, our homeless consultants, about the plan that they developed for the city. We're asking for your approval tonight of the plan. And Adriana Lopez will handle the item. I would also like to point out that we do have members from PATH, our consultants in the audience, if the council does have any more questions about the plan. Adriana?
Thank you, John. There's nothing on my monitor, I'm sorry. My monitor's down. Okay, I'll just go ahead and base it off the monitor up there. As John mentioned, this item came before you on July 3rd. And this is when our PATH representatives presented the proposed plan to prevent and combat homelessness. During the presentation, the consultants and representatives outlined the plan development process. And they also identified goals and the action items that were contained in the plan. This is a joint plan with the city of Balfour. Currently, the city of Balfour is a little behind the adoption process. So the city of Paramount and Balfour, in partnership with PATH, have developed a plan with the input of the city stakeholders. And during the meetings, we actually had Paramount staff involved, as well as a community meeting. We also had non-service providers provide input, so we could create a comprehensive plan. Our representatives from PATH also looked at the existing city policies and analyzed that. And we created this comprehensive plan. This slide identifies some of the goals that were outlined. So, as you can tell here, the goals here were set...
For rebooting.
Okay.
I can tell. There we go.
Okay, I think we're all on here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so these are the goals that were presented to you at the last meeting. As you could see here, goal number 1 is the one that we could obtain at the quickest possible way. And goal number 6 is going to take a little bit longer. These goals are specific to Paramount and not Balfour. One of the reasons why this is a comprehensive plan is that we have two individual areas where each city identifies their individual goals. At the last meeting, it was recommended that we post the Citizens Guide to Engaging People Experiencing Homelessness in our website. And we did. As you could see, there's a number at the bottom, 562-373-5264. That is the hotline number that is now operational. People can call there. It is not answered 24/7 because it's not an emergency response. But individuals can be, can go ahead and place a call for service to PATH. If they don't answer the phone, they can leave a message. And PATH representatives will return the call within three days. Also, we made available hard copies at our city facilities, which include City Hall, Community Center, and some of our major facilities where people visit there often. With that, it is recommended that the city council approve and adopt the plan to prevent and combat homelessness with the stipulation that the final draft of the plan be submitted to the Los Angeles County Initiative by July 27, 2018.
Any questions for Adriana?
Move the item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 3, Resolution Number 18022. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Speaking of homelessness, we, as well as other cities, have been approached by the United Way, asking for their, our support as they embark on their own campaign to help end homelessness. So the resolution before you tonight would support these efforts. And here's Adriana, once again, to give you more information about this item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. And we do have a representative here from United Way. So if you have any questions in regards to the campaign, she'll be able to answer any questions. As John mentioned, Resolution 18022 supports the efforts of the city of Paramount and our nonprofit organizations that are working to find a solution to end homelessness in our community. Homelessness is one of the most challenging problems that we have in our community right now, with approximately 55,000 people experiencing homelessness in Los Angeles County alone. Our last item outlined the city's efforts to prevent and combat homelessness in the city of Paramount. But as we all know, the crisis of homelessness is countywide, as well as nationwide. As a result, the United Way of Greater Los Angeles is asking the Paramount City Council to support the Everyone End Campaign. The Everyone End Campaign will help keep the promise to end homelessness by creating ways for the public to get involved by tracking, measuring, and sharing progress. Citizens will be able to learn more about the people who are experiencing homelessness in their community, stay informed on supportive housing, and have communities attend community events. They can also volunteer and take an active role in finding a solution to end homelessness. The Everyone End Campaign is asking for everyone to play a part to end homelessness by having the campaign where everyone is committed to assisting in their own way to end homelessness. United Way of Greater Los Angeles has the ambition to complete certain goals. One is to end homelessness for 45,000 families and individuals. Two, to prevent homelessness for 30,000 families and individuals. And lastly, to approve 5,000 units of supportive housing for our most vulnerable neighbors. The United Way of Greater Los Angeles is looking to complete these goals by July 1st of 2022. It is recommended that the city council read by title only and adopt Resolution 18022.
Thank you, Adriana. Any questions or comments?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 4, Appointing a Planning Commissioner. As mayor of the city, I appoint Jaime Abrego to the Planning Commission to fill a vacant position for a term expiring April 2021. May I have a second, please?
I'm sorry. Move it. Second.
Do we need a motion on this?
Just a motion.
Oh, just a motion?
I move, Daryl second.
Second.
Do I need to do a roll call? Mr. Kevanoff? Yes. Okay, Ms. Lanna?
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 5, Proposed Residential Air Purifier Filtration and HVAC Filter Rebate Program. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. At the April 3rd city council meeting, the council approved a new rebate program, if you recall, for residents. And that was toward the purchase of a home security device. And during that discussion, the council directed us to research the possibility of providing a similar rebate to residents for the purchase of in-room air purifiers. This was in response to the current and consistent unavailability of a specific grant program for this purpose. Excuse me. While researching for the rebate program, we also found data that could support a justification for using public funds for in-room air filters. And that is mostly from regional air pollution related to diesel exhaust. Additionally, after consulting with the city attorney, we determined that a rebate program, as opposed to a giveaway program, would lessen the city's exposure to liability, as we're not endorsing a specific product, as you would with a giveaway program. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Director of Community Development, John Carver, who will handle the item. John?
Thank you, John. I still have computer monitors. The mayor and councilmember Guian don't have...
That's all, we can use a big screen. Thank you, John.
Well, the big screen's out, so hang tight.
I'll share with Daryl. Go ahead, John.
The public, I think we want to get these going for the public, so... Sorry about the...
Do we have somebody checking into this?
Yeah.
It's pretty frequent, though.
I know.
It's happening at every council meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have IT people coming in?
Yes, we had them here on Monday, and is working on it right now. So we're rebooting it.
There we go.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, so this item is a request to establish a rebate program for Paramount residents to purchase air purifier units, or HVAC filters. As John mentioned, at the April 3rd council meeting, the council approved the home security rebate program and directed staff to explore a rebate program for air purifier units. The program would provide financial assistance with a rebate. And the city council put a placeholder in the FY 2019 budget of $10,000 for this program. By way of background, in October of 2017, the city council directed staff to explore grant opportunities to aid in the purchase of air purifier units. To help understand the effectiveness of air purifier units, the city hired a certified industrial hygienist from Pacific EHNS Services. And Pacific analyzed air quality data. Skipping a slide. Okay. So Pacific confirmed that samples taken by the Department of Public Health did not present a specific hazard. Pacific stated that air purifier units could be used if a resident felt such use was necessary. Pacific stated that HEPA air purifier units are the most effective in reducing unhealthful air particles. Looking at the justification for this program, pollution has been measured by a number of tools, including the CAL EnviroScreen tool that was developed by the State Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. And this tool measures different types of pollutants to establish if a city or community is disadvantaged. In this map, the higher CAL EnviroScreen scores are indicated in red. And you can see Paramount circled in black, and much of the city is in red. One source of pollution in the city is the freeways. We are ringed by freeways. And there is a heavy load of diesel trucks that pass through Paramount on the 710 freeway, going to and from the ports. Other indicators of pollution come from the US EPA, which has designated the greater Los Angeles area as an extreme non-attainment area for ground-level ozone. And ozone is created when exhaust from cars, trucks, and buses react with sunlight. The US EPA has also designated the greater Los Angeles area as an extreme non-attainment area for airborne particles, such as dust, dirt, and smoke from industry and vehicles. So looking at the air purifier units, the air purifier rebate would allow for the purchase of a TruHEPA air purifier unit. These units capture up to 99.97% of particles that are 0.3 microns or larger. And the units can also help to filter odors. A room-based TruHEPA air purifier unit can cost between $150 and $250. And these units are readily available online or in a hardware store. And here's a look at two different air purifier units. These are the TruHEPA. We are also recommending that HVAC filters be included in this rebate program, as filters effectively capture unhealthful air particles. Filters should have what is called a minimum efficiency reporting value, or MERV, of at least 13 on a scale of 1 to 16. And that is to be effective. And these filters have an average cost of about $50. And here's a look at the installation of two types of filters. So we are recommending a rebate of up to $100 for a home air purifier unit, and up to $50 for HVAC filters. To be eligible, you must live in the city. And this would be a one-time rebate per household. And it would be for either an air purifier unit or an HVAC filter. An online application would be submitted, and rebates would be issued on a first-come, first-served basis. The application process will mirror the process for the home security rebate program. So the application can be completed online. The documentation can be uploaded. And then the Community Development Department would review the documents and the application, and then issue the rebate to the resident. And it's recommended that the city council authorize the city manager or designate a implement the residential air purifier filtration and HVAC filter rebate program. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
I have one. Is it possible for the residents who did purchase an air purifier after the November 16 time period that may be reimbursed? Or is this just something that, from this point forward?
Right now, the guidelines would just be from this point forward.
Any other questions?
I have one question, Madam Mayor. The MERV efficiency rating you were talking about?
Yes.
Is that readily on the packaging of the filters? Or do you know?
Yes, it is. And online, it's easy to find the 13, at least the 13. So if you just put in...
But if you go in the store, it's on the packaging.
It would be on the packaging. Now, these, these sometimes have to be special order because they are such a high-efficiency filter.
Yeah, I doubt it, once I'm buying for a buck fifty.
Yeah.
We actually saw some online at Lowe's online, but not at Home Depot.
Okay.
So that's just an example.
Good to know.
Make a motion to move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 6, Award of Contract Construction Services for Housing. Rehabilitation 8842 Van Street. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Before, there we go. Before I turn over, John, I was going to talk a little slow, so we can get the projector back up and running. But it looks like it popped back up. The following two items are actually related, so we'll handle the staff report with both items at the same time. But we'll need for you to introduce both items and have a separate vote for each of them. As you know, our home improvement program provides federal grant funds to income-qualified residents to make improvements to their homes. Sometimes, these improvements can be readily seen. They can be cosmetic and make a dramatic improvement to the facade of the home. But other times, the improvements are not as visible. They can include things like electrical and plumbing. So here's John, who will go over both items, number 6 and 7. They're our latest residential rehab award of contracts. John?
Thank you, John. Okay, so by way of background, the home improvement program is funded with federal home fund, funds that are given by HUD. And the program can assist owner-occupied, single-family homes. The grants cover city-approved improvements, which can include repair and correction of deficient construction. For the two projects before the city council this evening, affordable-built construction was the lowest qualified bidder. And here's a look at the first property on Vans. And the work to be completed here will include a new water heater, new windows, a new wall heater, new copper piping, and a color coat to the exterior of the home and the garage. And here's a look at the property on Belota. And the work to be completed here will include a new roof, new furnace and air conditioning, a new garage door, and a color coat and painting of the exterior of the home. And it's, one, recommended that the city council award the contract for Home Improvement Program Construction Services at 8842 Van Street to affordable-built construction in the amount of $33,665. And number two, award the contract for Home Improvement Program Construction Services at 15133 Belota Avenue to affordable-built construction in the amount of $28,285. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for John?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 7?
We need, that was the report, and we just needed separate motions for both cases.
Yes, separate motions.
I move item 7 for 15133 Belota.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any comments, or committee reports from council members?
I have something, Madam Mayor. I just, first, I wanted to really thank our Public Works Department in the city. This morning, when I woke up, I had two or three texts from people from places all over the city that had been hit with heavy graffiti. And by the time I got around to calling and checking on it and getting back with the resident, which was about 8:30, they said it had already all been removed. So I think that's amazing. You guys just do an amazing job. I'm so glad that we have that kind of service in Paramount and that the residents don't have to suffer with looking at all of that nastiness all day, and that you guys get on it so quickly. So thank you. And then I went last week, I believe it was, or was it earlier this week? To the Tacos and Networking at the Northgate Market, where Assemblyman Rendon was speaking. And he had lots of terrific information for what's happening in LA and in California with budget surpluses, and some tremendous things that are happening in the state, and especially in LA. And tons of wonderful things to say about our great city. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dillon?
Went to the concert in the park, good turnout.
Went to the concert in the park during turnout. Everybody seemed to enjoy the music. Attended the cleanup on Saturday, and that was a good attendance, so thanks for everybody who showed up to pick up trash. And then, just real quick, at the last meeting, Diane had read a letter from Mr. Tanner, which talked about movies coming in to the city, and blah, blah, blah. And he didn't name the Gillans by name, but it sure did seem like he was insinuating. But I just find it funny how history repeats itself, because in 1970, he wrote a letter to my uncle Ray Gillan, who, he wrote this letter, and I'm not going to bore you with the details, but basically, it says that he insulted the Gillan family, and he wrote a letter of his apology based on his vendetta, and I have it, and it's signed by him. So I just find it ironic, 30 years later, people still have a vendetta. But I just wanted to make some clarification that this has been a long-time issue that he's had with the Gillan family, and he clearly stated about his vendetta. So I didn't really appreciate the letter being read on the record. I wouldn't read a letter that somebody wrote about another council member that I received, so I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
On July 26, one of our new restaurants will open, The Pizza Press, and I'd like to extend an invitation to all the residents, everyone. It's going to be grand opening at 11:00 a.m., and it's so nice to see our executive director in the audience, Kyle Miller. So, and like Councilmember Gillan stated, the concerts in the park are a hit. We have four more, so I encourage you to come out every Thursday from 6:30 till 8:00. Okay, at this time, I adjourn this meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I forgot staff comments.
No problem, no problem. This past Saturday, I just want to let you know that staff met with the nine service clubs that are here in Paramount, and includes Lions Club, Topeka Sister City, Rotary, Elks, Friends of the Library, American Legion, Knights of Columbus, Musa, and the New Latina Arts Foundation. The meeting went very well. The president or a representative from each club was there. Our Vice Mayor Hanson was there as well, representing the Elks Club. And we expressed to the group how important service clubs are to the community, so they appreciate that and the importance of them working together. They were pleasantly surprised. They didn't know a lot of the other groups existed, so they were really happy about the turnout, and they each spoke about the goals of each of their organization, what their missions are. The service club will attempt to coordinate the dates of special events, actually, and work together with each other on different events. So, and they all agreed that it's important to meet on a quarterly basis. So their next meeting will be at Clearwater Building on Saturday, October 13. So we're hoping to keep the momentum and hoping they can all work together to continue for the betterment of the community.
Very nice. Thank you, John.
Okay, at this time, I adjourn this meeting.